3:30, I now call the regular council meeting of November 13th, 2025 to order. First item of business is the invocation and pledge of allegiance this evening.
Can I do roll call?
Forgive me, my apologies, Fatima, my apologies.
Councilmember Lopez?
Present.
Councilmember Keel?
Present.
Thank you. Councilmember Freund? Councilmember Greer?
Present.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Present.
Vice Mayor Searcher?
Present.
And Mayor Palguda, I believe he's joining us in a little bit.
Basically, from what I understand.
Yeah, we have a quorum.
All right, thank you. All right, so this evening, our invocation and pledge of allegiance will be led by Pastor Lloyd Murphy of the Firm Foundation Church. Would you please stand and rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance?
Let's pray. Our Father in Heaven, we thank you for another opportunity to gather together in the service of this great community that we live in. We thank you for the blessing it is to live in such a place as this and a country like this, how privileged we are. And this week especially, Father, we remember that those freedoms did not come without a cost, and we thank you for our many veterans who have served our country. Thank you for those that come right here from our community. Thank you for our first responders. Lord, we are so blessed, and we thank you for all these things that we enjoy. Father, I thank you for these civil servants before us. I thank you for their sacrifices. Thank you for all that they do to protect our community and preserve, and we pray for them even tonight, that you would give wisdom and grace as they wrestle with decisions that will impact all of us, and that everything they do would be done with integrity and dignity, and we pray it all in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Murphy, thank you. Item number three is the approval of the agenda. Does anyone have anything to remove or add? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented by electronic vote.
A second. Councilmember Keel, how do you wish to vote?
Yea.
That passes. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Item number four is proclamations. Homelessness Awareness Month.
Whereas Prescott Valley joins the nation in recognizing November as Homelessness Awareness Month, whereas as of September 2025, the Prescott area identified over 177 homeless students within the Prescott and Humboldt Unified School Districts, 62 in Prescott schools and 115 in Humboldt schools. Whereas Agape House of Prescott works to reduce the number of homeless families by walking alongside families as they rebuild and turn their lives around. Whereas since its incorporation in 2013, Agape House has had an 86% success rate of families living independently one year after graduation from Agape House. Whereas the town of Prescott Valley recognizes that homelessness continues to be a serious problem for many individuals and families in Prescott Valley. Now therefore be resolved that I, Kel Palguda, Mayor of the town of Prescott Valley, hereby proclaim November 2025 as Homelessness Awareness Month and encourage the residents of Prescott Valley to give back and become emboldened with Agape House of Prescott in their vision to provide a pathway to independence for families in crisis. Thank you.
And at this time, I want to invite up Becky Mitchell. She is the Executive Director for Agape House to accept the proclamation, and Becky, would you please say a few words?
Thank you, Matt, and thank you, Council and Kel. It started here in this room probably four or five years ago. I want to bring up one of our nonprofit consultants. He's one of our major funders. Would you come join me? The only reason we were able to receive and secure funding through this is because the land was donated. That's a big part of the stipulation for the funds that we received. The land was donated through the Fane family and through this town, so we want to say thank you so much. Hi, Mayor, right in time. I remember I showed you through our apartments in Prescott, and it was empty, no furniture on a Monday. By Friday, we had secured housing for a Prescott Valley resident who had lost his home. He lost his home because he had worked for 30 years and retired. He was paying $800 a month for rent, which was common back then. The rent went up to $1,400. He lost his home. That's what we have seen happen, so we were able to secure housing. We appreciate what this council has done so much for walking with us, Gilbert for helping us, Stacy, brand new to the department, thank you very much. We are weeks away from completing this project. We thank you in advance for walking with us over the years and for the next couple of weeks. Fred, would you like to say thank you?
Yeah, thank you for being so supportive. When a city is supportive like that and makes donated property available, it makes this a whole lot easier. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Can I ask my people to come take a picture together? Yes, this is Diana Webb. She is our Director of Operations, and Mark Hansen, he is our Board Chair for next year. He's the Vice Chair this year. Would you like to say a few words? Okay.
Why don't you come down front here, everybody, if you don't mind?
No, no, no.
You've been a little bit, a little bit more.
At this time, we'd like to call a few individuals down who have dedicated their volunteer hours for helping out the town of Prescott Valley. It's going to be Guy Brown. Guy, you're here? Come on down, Guy. Tom Hickson. And Jim Cox. These individuals, how about you guys share with what you guys do for the town, and we're missing a couple people, and I'm going to announce their names as well. So you just let the town know what you guys have been doing.
Over quite a few years that I've been on the council, we've had the experience to look at bonding and stuff like that, and I know the council ends up not doing the approving and stuff like that. We were just there to, I guess legally, do the stuff, do the work that's necessary to get that done. It's really been a pleasure to do that, working with the community and with the leaders of the council. We thank you very much.
They're all a part of the Municipal Property Corporation, and in Municipal Property Corporation, that commission is going away. And I'd also like to thank Elizabeth Kennedy for serving, as well as Leonard Heinrich. They just couldn't make it with us tonight. So we're going to take a picture, and again, guys, I know it's not flashy, it's not sexy, but what you did is very important to the town. So thank you. And for appreciation, we got you guys here up here. One more time for these guys. Next up, soon in the month.
The town of Prescott Valley, in collaboration with the Optimist Club of Yavapai County and Bradshaw Mountain High School, are honoring these two outstanding students for November. Welcome, Kennedy Kuhl and Michael Sanford. Today, we recognize these students for their commitment to the school and community engagement. Because of their hard work, they have been nominated by school staff and instructors at BMHS. Congratulations. Now it's time for each of you to tell us a little bit about yourself. Kennedy, why don't you start?
Good evening, members of the Prescott Valley Town Council, the Optimistic Club of Yavapai County, and everyone here tonight. My name is Kennedy Kuhl, and I'm truly honored to stand here as the Student of the Month. I'm a senior at Bradshaw Mountain High School, where I serve as the Senior Class President, a proud member of Student Council, and the varsity cheer captain. Being involved in Student Council and cheer has pushed me to grow as a leader, taught me how to communicate, and helped me become someone my school can count on. I'm incredibly grateful for the people at Bradshaw who have supported me, believed in me, and helped shape who I'm becoming. Along with my leadership roles, I'm also enrolled in the CNA program, and I'm taking college English to get some of my prerequisites out of the way before starting nursing school. Balancing advanced classes, cheer, leadership, and two part-time jobs hasn't always been easy, but it's taught me responsibility, time management, and how important it is to stay committed even when life gets overwhelming. I plan to attend Yavapai College to pursue nursing, and I'm excited to move into a career where I can make a real difference in people's lives. Every step I'm taking right now is helping me get closer to that goal. I want to say how grateful I am to attend a school like Bradshaw Mountain. It's more than just a school, it's a community that has helped me grow. I especially want to thank my principal, Mr. Bradshaw, for always supporting me and for genuinely helping me be the person I am today. I most importantly want to thank my parents. They're the reason I'm able to stand here tonight. Their love, support, and belief in me have guided me through everything. I wouldn't be who I am without them. So thank you to the Optimist Club of Yavapai County and the Town Council for this recognition. It truly means so much to me, and I'm incredibly honored. Thank you again for this opportunity.
Michael, why don't you tell us something about yourself?
Good evening. I'm Michael Sanford, and I'm really honored to be recognized as one of Bradshaw Mountain's Student of the Month. This means a lot to me, and I just want to take a minute to thank everyone who has helped me get here. Being a part of Student Council has been one of the best experiences of my high school time, or my time in high school. From serving as junior class president last year to student body president this year, I've learned so much about leadership, communication, and what it takes to bring people together and make our school stronger. And of course, football has played a huge part in shaping who I am. As quarterback, I've learned that the importance of teamwork, staying focused under pressure, and trusting the people around you. The lessons I've learned on the field over carry on, carry over into everything I do, in the school, in Student Council, and in life. I want to thank my coaches, my teachers, my teammates, and my parents for always pushing me to do my best and for pushing me to do what I believe in. I couldn't have done any of this without their support, and I am proud to represent Bradshaw Mountain High School, and I'll keep working hard to make our school proud. Thank you.
And now Richard Bradshaw, from Bradshaw Mountain High School Principal.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Palguda, Town Council, for having us here tonight. As always, one of my favorite nights celebrating our students. We have a couple of student athletes who are also very involved in our school with Student Council. They work all the dances, all the football games, of course, and they just work very hard. They're a big part of our school, and without our kids being involved, our school wouldn't have run as well as it does, and I really appreciate these two, especially as our Student of the Months. So let's give them another round of applause.
And Mike Whiting from Yavapai Optimists.
Well, as Rick told you, I think this is our favorite time of month as far as recognizing our kids, and as you heard, they're very successful in school. And I think Michael already mentioned the fact that he looks to his parents for the help he got in the mentoring and support he got to make it here today. So we're really proud of both of you for being here. You are very special, and that's why we do this, so we can recognize you and say, "Go, go harder and further than you can, think in your head anyway." Anyway, Student of the Month is just one of the rewards as a result of your personal commitment and hard work in your journey at Bradshaw Mountain High School. We know this is just the beginning for further achievements and personal growth through new opportunities, and we look forward to you pursuing your education and career. Obviously, you are ready, or you wouldn't be here. And we always like to say we'd like to see you come back in the community, whether it be by work or otherwise, to contribute, to pay back the community, and I know sometimes it's hard, but we'll, we'll look forward to seeing you and your smiling faces. As Michael had mentioned, we'd also like to recognize those who supported Kennedy and Michael, in addition to faculty and staff at Bradshaw Mountain High School, and that's your parents. And if the parents are here, any parents are here tonight, if you could stand up, we'd like to recognize you. So, without any delay, it's with sincere pleasure that we congratulate you as November Students of the Month from Bradshaw Mountain High School. And on behalf of the Optimist Club of Yavapai County, the town of Prescott Valley, and Bradshaw Mountain High School, congratulations. And we do look forward to seeing you in the future doing great things. And we'd like to just commemorate this evening with a little memento, and that is we'll ask Michael, we have a little Michael's tonight, to give you a certificate, and I'll read what it says. "The Optimist Club of Yavapai County, in partnership with Bradshaw Mountain High School and the town of Prescott Valley, certify that Kendall Kuhl and Michael Sanford have been named November Students of the Month." And I'd like to give you one additional thing before we end the presentation, and that is that I have the Optimist Creed, and if you can follow the creed, and hopefully you'll have time tonight to read that, then I think you'll be the most successful you can be and the best human beings on earth. So take a look at this, and again, congratulations one last time. Applause, because you deserve it.
I'd also like to say we have our second round of football playoffs tomorrow night against Coconino High School with our quarterback, Michael Sanford. So if you need something to do, come on over to the high school. This game starts at 7 o'clock.
Great job, guys. Go Bears. Next up, call of the public. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters listed on the agenda or solely on matters within the jurisdiction of the town. Any person wishing to address the council must register their name with the town clerk prior to the commencement of the meeting. The council's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Such remarks shall be limited to three minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. Clerk?
Mayor, we have five people registered. First up is Steve Carros, followed by David Lerner, Chris Russo, Charles Gorman, and Rose Moser.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome, sir.
Good evening. I would like to reference on the public record the Arizona Revised Statute 16-322, subsection nine, that is provided, here it is, that is provided to each candidate running for mayor or council, and is extrapolated in bold print here, which is provided by the town clerk to each of these candidates. And this states that there shall be no less than 444 and no more than 887 signature petitions for the August 4, 2026 election. It's state law by the state legislature. This is a screenshot of Mayor Kel Palguda's semi-official Facebook page. Note, he writes, "Thanks to everyone. In less than one week, I have surpassed the minimum number of signatures required and am clearly on my way to reaching my goal of 2,000 signatures." Well, this begs the question as to why the mayor appears to be ignoring state law and seek so many extra signatures that cannot be accepted by the town clerk. Indeed, the citizens of Prescott Valley expect the members of this council, especially the mayor, to know, understand, and follow rules. Since the citizens can only sign one petition for mayor, this situation can thereby prevent some 1,100 people from being able to submit a valid signature. I believe that the town attorney will have to somehow address the matter to reinstate any signees over the 887 rule to their lawful right to submit a valid signature. Meanwhile, Mayor Palguda, in an article in November 5, Prescott Valley Tribune, was quoted as believing he is running unopposed. Even though this is incredibly premature, since the election is over eight months away, it didn't generate a lot of concern among citizens. it did generate a lot of concern among citizens. It is also inaccurate, since a third candidate, who is very highly qualified, pulled his mayor packet on October 31, five days before the article was published. So, I would like to hear from the town attorney or the town manager, what steps will be taken to restore the rights of those who signed over the state mandated limit. Thank you.
Next up, we have David Lerner.
Is this going to be about me being an overachiever?
It might be.
All right. Just wanted to prepare myself.
Actually, it's not about you at all, y'all. Thank you all for letting me address you tonight. I would like to convey my dismay about Councilman Ken Freund's behavior at the Monday Planning and Zoning Committee meeting. Councilman Freund insisted that newly appointed committee man Joe Colosimo not only recuse himself from the committee proceedings, which he had already done, but resign his post simply because Mr. Colosimo had been leading proponent for the government tank project for the last several months preceding the November 10 committee meeting. A difference in opinion is not grounds for demanding resignation. Councilman Freund's behavior is not only violates all decorum for an elected official, but is highly unethical during a public meeting. Councilman Freund is obviously not representing all of Prescott Valley with this type of behavior. Is it possible he is not so subtly representing the interests of the PVC? He's the one that should recuse himself from next month's government tank vote by the town council, or maybe he should be the one to resign. At the very least, he should issue a public apology to Mr. Colosimo. Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
I'd like to respond to that. The first sentence I said at that meeting was clearly that I was speaking as a concerned private citizen, not as a council member. The courts have repeatedly determined that we have, we have rights for free speech and First Amendment, and we don't leave those at the door when we become a council member. I was not speaking as a council member. Thank you.
Clerk?
Chris Russo.
Welcome, sir.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, and staff, my name is Chris Russo, like you heard, and first of all, I want to honor a promise I made to Mr. Palaguda when we had our little talk a couple of years ago, that I wouldn't mention any particular person by name. So, I'm going to get up here and just talk about, talk generically about a member. I want to state how appalled I was at the behavior of one of the town council members and their outburst at P&amp;Z calling for the resignation of its newest member, Joe Colosimo, at the meeting on November 10. I was at another meeting on November 7 for the Prescott Historical Society. Joe Colosimo was asked by the, I forgot her name, but the leader of the Prescott Historical Society, Joe Colosimo was asked to speak there regarding the Fane Park gravel pit and its negative effects on historic sites, if it's moved there. Joe opened up his talk saying he was there as a concerned citizen and not in any official capacity, not in any other official capacity. He also said he wasn't a paid representative of the Fanes. This councilman got up and stormed out of the room after he made a speech about the hijacking of the meeting, saying it was an ad for the Fanes. The head of Prescott Valley, Prescott Valley Historical Society defended our actions in having Joe speak there because of the repercussions of moving the gravel pit to Stone Ridge. His behavior there, as well as the P&amp;Z meeting, was disrespectful and embarrassing. He called for the resignation of Commissioner Joe Colosimo at his first meeting on P&amp;Z after he did the right thing and recused himself from a vote on the government tank, although he didn't really have to. He did that as, because he's a good citizen and he wants to not give in any, you know, well, let me just read, I get to remember some of them. He said Joe should not have talked on this subject because he was going to vote on it at the next P&amp;Z meeting. Because I'm a Christian, I'm not going to call this for the resignation of this council member as he did to Joe. I am, however, calling on him to write a letter to Joe, in particular, and the rest of the P&amp;Z members, submit it for the record, and apologize for his outburst. I'm not going to call for his resignation of a duly-elected town council member as he did for the newly-elected P&amp;Z member. I am, however, calling on this councilman to do the right thing and rescind his call for Joe to step down. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Clerk?
Charles.
I'm just going to leave that one as a vague comment to council, didn't call anyone out specifically, so we'll just leave it at that. Welcome, sir.
Thank you very much. My name's Charles Gorman. I'd like to spend a few minutes discussing some maps and data related to the government tank and West Fane Pit. Councilmembers, you have a hard copy packet that looks like this. This, the beginning of this shows the areas near West Fane Park that would become gravel pits if the government tank area is not used. As you can see, there are two areas that are immediately adjacent to Fane Park. To me, most visitors to the park assume these are areas of the park, and if they become gravel pits, they will be sorely surprised. In addition, there, the four areas span both sides of Stone Ridge Drive, approximately one half mile south of the intersection of Stone Ridge Drive and Highway 69. The second page of your packet discusses some of the, well, discusses the map that follows it on page three. I wanted to just highlight some of these numbers. The measurement from government tanks to Blue Hills nearest home is 1,497 feet, almost 1,500 feet. From Victorian Estates to West Fane Pit is 1,369 feet, so a little bit less than 1,400 feet. From Stone Ridge to the nearest West Fane Pit is 492 feet, less than 500 feet. This is a new statistic that I looked up today. I realized that Cow Ranch Store is less than 483 feet from Area 1 of the West Fane Pit. And in addition, West Fane Pit to the Fitz Morris ruins is zero feet. They are immediately adjacent. The map on page three illustrates some of those distances in a map. Page four has a horizontal bar chart illustrating these distances as well for simple reference and comparison. Page five is a little more revealing. It illustrates the countless homes and property lines within a quarter mile of the West Fane, West Fane and government tank sites. The numbers are 25 homes in Victorian Estates and North Stone Ridge from the West Fane Pit site. At Blue Red, at Blue Hills, there are two property lines and zero structures within a quarter mile. Page six is the same except for illustrating the distances at a half mile. At Blue Hills, there are 20 property lines, and I believe 13 homes. It's difficult to say from the satellite maps, they might be homes, they might be structures, anything else like that. From the West Fane proposed site, there, within a half mile, there are 345 homes. Thank you very much for your time, and thank you for allowing me to present, and I'll let the data speak for itself. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Last, Speaker Rose Moser.
Welcome, ma'am. You're probably going to need to pull that down a little bit.
Thank you, council, for allowing the public to speak. And Mayor Palaguda, I just want to say that I'm pro-government tanks mine, that we are hoping that you'll change the zoning laws to permit it to start. It's very positive work in our county, in our area. And I live in Stone Ridge along one of the major rojos, where the wind comes frequently and constantly, and I'm not afraid of the wind that will bring the sand or any residue from that mine towards our direction to the west from that mine. I believe that when we had the meeting at Stone Ridge, it was covered very well about how they have all the vacuums and they stop all of the wind and the problems with that, and that they've had people working for multiple years, over 10, 20, 30 years, and have had no problems with any lungs that have been previously affected by other kinds of cancers related to mining. And I honestly believe that it's a positive thing for our area. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Clerk confirming no one else?
No one else, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, council comments, I'll start to my right. Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. As most of you are aware, we only have one council meeting for November and one council meeting in December. So, want to definitely cover one of the, a couple of items that are going to be happening here in the next few weeks. The first is the Flying High Turkey Drive, which is Monday, November 24, from noon to 6:00 p.m. at the Fry's here on Glassford Hill Road. Please help us provide turkeys and all the trimmings for those less fortunate in our community. Once again, I will be donning the turkey suit as the official turkey for the Prescott Valley Chamber of Commerce, and I won't be alone this year. The Prescott Valley Chamber of Commerce Teacher of the Year and Liberty Traditional Schools Doug Rowe will be joining me. Once school ends, he'll be in a turkey suit, and we will both be there at Fry's for the Flying High Turkey Drive. Exactly. So, then, starting Thanksgiving evening, November 27 to December 30, is the 2025 Valley Lights, Sunday through Thursday from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., Friday, Saturday, and holidays from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. One of the things about the Valley Lights, just kind of an interesting statistic, 80,000 to 90,000 cars go through the Valley Lights, and of course, that brings up the people from the valley and all around Arizona to see the Valley Lights. And then, another event is, I believe this is the third or fourth annual stroll-through Valley Lights, which is Tuesday, December 2, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And it is there basically on Second Street as you make the turn down to Fane Park. Parking is on Second Street at the vacant lot next to the Ocean Blue Car Wash, and then people can walk down and just walk through the Valley Lights.
Thank you, sir. Is, I know I came a little late, is Councilwoman Keel on the phone?
Yes, Mayor.
Councilwoman, you have anything to add?
Hi, yes, I just wanted to say I'm down in Tucson, attending a leadership program put on by the League of Cities and Towns, and that's why I'm not able to be present this evening. Grateful for Zoom.
Thank you, ma'am. Manages report?
Mr. Mayor, the only thing I'd add is there's the Winter Spectacular, which is December 6, from 2 to 8 here at the Civic Center campus, and it's a great opportunity for families and individuals to come out and kick off the holiday season. It's pretty much all free for those participating, other than food that you would want to buy. But it is a wonderful time to kind of kick off the season, and the campus is going to be filled with lots of great lights and activities. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Next up, item 10, Consent Agenda. All matters listed under Consent Agenda are considered routine by the town council, and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda, it will be considered separately. Clerk, council, we've had a chance to look at our packet, you want to remove an item, do it now, if not, I'll call for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve all items listed under Consent Agenda by electronic vote.
Have a second?
All second.
Clerk, please call a vote.
Councilmember Keel?
Yes.
Councilmember Freund?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, item 11A, ordinance number 2025-970, repealing and reenacting Town Code Chapter 14 subdivision and other land projects. This is a second reading. Council, we reviewed this last time, are there any additional questions or comments for staff? Seeing none, hearing none? Clerk?
Ordinance number 2025-970, an ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, repealing Chapter 14 subdivisions in its entirety, and adopting by reference a document entitled "Repealing and Reenacting Chapter 14 Subdivisions and Other Land Projects," providing that all other chapters, articles, and sections of the Town Code not hearing repealed or amended shall remain in full force and effect, providing that if any provision in this ordinance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provision shall not be effective, shall continue full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, ma'am. Shall this ordinance pass?
Councilmember Keel?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, item 11B, ordinance 2025-965, amending Town Code Section 1-08-020, clarifying service requirements for civil code enforcement. Again, Mr. Legler went over this, council, if there's anything additional or questions for Mr. Legler? Seeing none, hearing none? Clerk?
Ordinance number 2025-965, an ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending Section 1-8-20, commencement of civil action of Article 1-8, penalties and enforcement of Chapter 1, general, of the Town Code, to clarify available options for service of citations to defendants in civil code enforcement actions, and providing that all other chapters, articles, and sections of the Town Code not hearing amended shall remain in full force and effect, providing that if any provision in this ordinance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provision shall not be effective, shall continue in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, ma'am. Shall this ordinance pass?
Councilmember Keel?
Yes.
Councilmember Greer? Yes, thank you. That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, 12A, ordinance 2025-973, amending Town Code Section 7-01-150, application for permit to allow for third-party review of permit applications in accordance with SB 1353-.
Mr. Mayor and council, I appreciate your patience in allowing us to have brought all of these ordinance amendments these last few council meetings. One of the reasons has been that we needed to follow up from the legislation that had occurred this year, and this is another one of those. The legislature wanted to require municipalities to consider applications for residential, single residential homes more quickly. And so, what they said was, if you're over 30,000 in a community, you must adopt a provision that allows somebody to ask you to send that application to a third party for review if you haven't reviewed it and taken the actions you need to take within 15 days. Now, they have to pay for it, but that's an opportunity that is given to them in certain circumstances. And so, we are amending our code to provide for such a process. However, you see that you've got Stacy Bristow standing in front of you, who would also like to talk about a proposal that she and her staff are making to expand that concept even further and allow in other circumstances for people to voluntarily ask that they get a, what's the word we're going to use?
Expedited.
An expedited, thank you. An expedited review that they could pay for if they want to do that. So, go ahead and let Stacy talk.
Thank you for that. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, town manager, and community, all 15 of you, thank you for being here. And I also want to thank Ivan, it's a heavy lift, there's a lot of legalities, and there's a lot that happens behind the scenes, and he's been, he and his team have been amazing helping my staff and walking through all the technical elements to that, so very, very grateful that you're available to us as often as you are to walk us through that. So, thank you for that. So, this mandate is, obviously, there's the mandate, but there's also part of development services enhancement initiatives, and I just wanted to share that we are offering or looking to offer optional expedited plan check or inspection services opportunities that go beyond residential for our department, for all the developers in the building community. We did extensive stakeholder interviews, many of you were part of that. I have spoken with over 117 individuals, that included, but not limited to the YCCA group, developers of all types, contractors, architects, town staff, elected and appointed officials, special interest groups, the chamber, business owners, residents, neighboring jurisdictions, and more. And the expedited process offering was a core theme and desire from all of the people that we had spoken with. Beyond that, it is a common practice often, and considered a good practice, and keeps us competitive in the market. competitive in the market when we're looking at developing projects. I also wanted to state that typically reductions through this process can look anywhere from between thirty and sixty-five percent in timeline reductions. That can be pretty significant, give or take. We're looking to roll this out formally, probably on the first of January, for all of the applicants. It will be posted on the website. We'll share it with YCCA and obviously a distribution list. And I think, as Ivan mentioned, the cost is passed through to the applicant. And even with all of the processes that we're going to offer for expedited review for plan check or inspection, we're not going to have additional town fees on top of that. It will just be the regular expedited fees and our regular fees. So I just wanted to share that. We're super excited about it. I can't wait to shout it from the rooftops, share the message. So just wanted to let you know, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer those.
Counsel, any questions for staff?
Thank you. And Mr. Mayor and counsel, again, that will be an administrative process that they'll adopt a policy for. The action you're taking tonight is to respond to the state law and simply deal with the single-family residences.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to read ordinance number 2025-973, amending Section 7-01-150 of the Town Code to comply with recent legislation by title only on two separate occasions and place the same on final passage.
Have a second?
A second.
Clerk, please call a vote.
Councilmember Keel?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, Mayor. Ordinance number 2025-973, an ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending Town Code, Section 7-1, 150, application for permit in Article 7-1, the Town of Prescott Valley Administrative Code, and Chapter 7, Building, to authorize third-party review of certain applications for building permits in accordance with ARS 9-470.1, providing that all other chapters, articles, and sections of the Town Code, not hearing repeal or amended, shall remain in full force and effect, providing that if any provision and disorderance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provision shall not be affected, but shall continue in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective thirty days after its passage and approval according to law. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That was a lot. Next up, 12B, professional services agreement, Matrix New World Engineering for Recharge Facility. Ma'am? Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and counsel. delighted to be back to present another professional services agreement to you today, this one that we've been meaning to do for a couple of years now, to expand our recharge facility along the Aquifer River Bottom. And this really harkens back to our Vision 2024 goal of recharging 100% of available effluent water in accordance with town standards. Now, we do that every year, but we have the opportunity here to actually expand the facility, to actually be able to accommodate more water in the aquifer, number one, and also get credit for those, for those acre feet that we will be infiltrating into the aquifer. We do not currently have the ability to collect all of the credits that we recharge into our aquifer, and that's based on the ADWR, Arizona Department of Water Resources, permit that we have on the facility. So our solution is actually to expand the existing facility and give us more surface area, right? Because we're blessed with these clay soils here, and that will actually allow us to recharge more water faster into our aquifer. And so we actually put forth a request for qualifications and to get this permitting process started, and received three submittals, and Matrix New World Engineering actually scored the highest of those three firms. So the contract that you have before you tonight is actually a two-phased project, one that starts this year and then continues on to the next fiscal year. And the total fees for that contract will be $148,000 and $148,000 for the whole project, but this first phase will not exceed $78,860. So essentially, what they do is they collect some data on soil conditions and hydraulic properties of them throughout the entire facility. They do a groundwater flow model, and based on those, what that groundwater flow model shows them, helps us to amend our permits for both the River Bottom facility and for the North Plains facility. And then if we need to change our permit through the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, which helps us manage the aquifer protection permit, we will then be doing that with them. Permitting will likely be completed by fall 2027. That is subject to basically how this permitting process happens with ADWR and ADEQ. So essentially, what we will end up doing then is, as you see in the map, our current facilities are the North Plains Recharge Ponds to the north of the map, and then our Aquifer River facility. And those two facilities, we manage every year. We would like to expand for sure from Mountain Valley Park, where we already have a discharge point. So infrastructure is already in place to allow us to discharge from there down Lake Shore Wash, and then down around the corner there through the Aquifer River. That will add at least six and a half miles to the actual whole facility. And the portion of the facility to the south, we're not sure if we're going to be able to do that or not. There may be some portion of that we may be able to incorporate, but that's, you know, that's in the offing. We'll figure that out as we go along. So I think with that, that's all I have for you this evening, unless you have questions.
Whenever we're talking about preserving and conserving water, it's always a good day, right? So this is an exciting project. Counsel, do we have questions? Go ahead.
I think it's a good idea overall. I like it. The one concern I have is that I've heard that we have some PFAS and other bad chemicals in some of our effluent. And would you kindly address that issue, please?
Absolutely. I'd be happy to do so. So, okay, so my background is in source water protection, which means essentially protecting the water quality in the aquifer underneath us, right? So my goal in doing this is to expand our facility without endangering some of our existing wells, right? So this expansion should actually not impact water quality for any additional wells other than the five that we have PFAS in for our system. So I don't foresee this causing us heartburn later on in regards to PFAS. That was, that was the, kind of the spirit in which this project was taken, undertaken. I don't know if you remember, but a number of years ago, we proposed potentially expanding it all the way from Granville onward. Now, that would have then potentially impacted some of our existing wells and some of our big pumpers. This will not do that. I can't give any guarantees of that, of course, because hydrogeology being what it is, I can't foresee that. But this does not flow through any of our existing wellfields, and so therefore shouldn't elevate risks beyond an acceptable level.
Counsel?
Thank you.
I appreciate all the information you give us, because we all give our families the same water, too. So thank you. When we're doing a recharge, and the water's been processed, and then we're ready to do the recharge, where does that water go to? Is it nearby where we're, by where the processing plant is?
So, yes, these two facilities here actually accept, I believe, 75% of our water. It may be more than that. I'm not the resident expert on that at the moment, but it does, most of our reclaimed water does go to these two facilities. We do also send it to Stone Ridge Golf Course and to Mountain Valley Park. So it's already accepting our recharge, our reclaimed water. So those are the four endpoints that we currently have for our reclaimed water.
So they're kind of like a pool that we can send it to and let it just naturally go into the ground?
Absolutely.
The, I can't remember the names of those really cool tubes that we're experimenting with, the long, you know, that are being put into the ground. Is there any way we can actually put those in to help do more recharge?
So at this point, it's not clear to me that that would actually help us all that much. Just based on, I've looked at a number of different well logs in this area, and I don't know that we have any areas deeper in the aquifer that we're not already filling with our recharge water. So I'm not sure that implementing the Parjana irises throughout, yes, throughout this entire facility will help us. That is something that we're contemplating, but I don't, I'm reluctant to pull the trigger on that.
I'm just thinking that, hey, we're putting the water there anyway. Let's just kind of like speed it up, right?
Well, and, you know, I mean, it's a good thought, because we do have water mound, groundwater mounds in these areas. So it behooves us to spread that out a little bit more, and therefore, yeah, just get more of the water to more of the aquifer without endangering our existing well infrastructure.
I just keep thinking right outside the buildings here on how much water should we have when it does rain or snow, because you see it just pouring off this building. And I'm thinking, right out there on the planter would be great, but then it'd probably do something to our foundations, so who knows, right?
Well, and, you know, at some point, perhaps we might revisit the rainwater harvesting project that we're going to be implementing to actually get that water deeper. But we want to make sure that that technology actually works in our testing that we're going to be doing before we, you know, dig things back up and implement that technology.
The way that it's presented and what we see of what it could be, you can't project that there will be a failure to it. It just seems like such a great idea to me. So I'm excited about seeing what the results will be. Thank you.
Counsel, we have any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve an agreement with Matrix New World Engineering Land Surveying and Landscape Architecture, PC, for recharge facility expansion planning and permitting in the amount of $78,600 over a two-year period by electronic vote. Second?
Clerk, please call a vote.
Councilmember Keel?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, ordinance number 2025-971, repealing Town Code, Article 8-06, to dissolve the Municipal Property Corporation Board. Mr. Legler, anything you want to add to this?
No, Mayor and counsel. Just to remind us that since the late 1980s, we've been using that MPC board, and they've done a lot of good work for us. But times have changed, and we don't use MPCs anymore for this type of financing. And so it's time to make this change.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments for Mr. Legler? Seeing none, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to read ordinance number 2025-971, repealing the MPC board by title only on two separate occasions, and placing the same on final passage.
A second.
Clerk?
Councilmember Keel?
I approve.
Thank you. That passes unanimously, Mayor. Ordinance number 2025-971, an ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, repealing Town Code, Article 8-6, Municipal Property Corporation Board, and Chapter 8, Business, in its entirety, and reserving for future use, providing that all other chapters, articles, and sections of the Town Code, not hearing repeal or amended, shall remain in full force and effect, providing that if any provision and disorderance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provision shall not be affected, but shall continue in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective thirty days after its passage and approval according to law. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, item 12B, ordinance number 2025-972, repealing Town Code, Article 8-02, Business License, and reenacting business registration, establishing peddler operating hours. Are you adding anything to this, Ms. Brenner?
Yes, just a little quick recap. This agenda item is to change the business license program to a registration program. So the main difference is that there will not be any more annual renewals, and businesses would only have to submit a registration, one-time thing, and they'll be good for the rest of the life of the business. So that's pretty much what we're proposing, to transition all of our active existing business licenses. We want to take a phased approach for the next 12 months on a monthly basis, as businesses are up for renewal. Instead of renewing their license, they would just fill out a new registration form so that we can issue or automate the issuance of their certificate. They would not have to pay a fee unless it's a brand, brand-new business in the community. And this code also, this code change also talks about, you know, adding the hours of operation for peddlers. When a peddler is going door-to-door, house-to-house, they can only do so from 9:00 to 7:00 PM on any given day, so that way no one shows up at 5:00 AM at your doorstep. And also clarifying, clarifying the definition of peddler to include edible food items, food stuff.
Thank you, ma'am. We have questions or comments for clerk? Vice Mayor?
I just want to thank the clerk's office, the legal team, and Neighborhood Services, specifically Code Compliance, for all their hard work on getting this item on the agenda so quickly. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to read ordinance number 2025-972, repealing business licensing in favor of business registration by title only on two separate occasions, and placing the same on final passage.
Have a second?
A second.
Clerk? Clerk, please call a vote.
You also have to voice it out. I'm sorry. So for the record, Matt Searcher, Vice Mayor, Searcher, motion, and...
Councilman Freund has a second on the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Keel?
Yes, I approve.
Thank you. That passes unanimously, Mayor. Ordinance number 2025-972, an ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending Town Code, Article 8-1, Peddlers, in Chapter 8, Business, to clarify the definition of peddler and establish the hours during which peddlers are prohibited from operating within the town, and repealing Town Code, Article 8-2, Business License, and reenacting Article 8-2, Business Registration, in Chapter 8, Business, providing that all other chapters, articles, and sections of the Town Code, not hearing repeal or amended, shall remain in full force and effect, providing that if any provision and disorderance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provision shall not be effective, but shall continue in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective thirty days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, ma'am. And we are now at the end of our program. Counsel, we have anything to add or for the good of the order? Seeing none, hearing none. Hey, folks, thanks for coming out. We'll see you next month.